Okay, September 6th. It is 6:33 and we are here for the town council regular meeting agenda. Madam Clerk.
You have councilors Bordelon, Baumgartner, Franco, Heed, Melendez, Anne Zepiri, and yourself, Madam Mayor. So you have more than a quorum with seven members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilors Zepiri, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please, sir?
Glad to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilors Zepiri. Recognitions, awards, and memorials, we have none this evening. We also have no public hearings. So we are on to receipt of citizens petitions. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. When you are recognized, please clearly state your name and address and speak clearly. Presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during response to citizens petitions portion of the meeting. And we have, Councilor Parker has joined us. So we are at eight councilors right now. And we have one citizen who wishes to speak this evening. And that is Matthew Schulman. Mr. Schulman, you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Matthew Schulman of 15 Valley Road. My concern is that Groton eludes $345 million in federal funds due to last-minute Census Bureau rule changes. Groton's eligible for $2,900 per person per year for the next 10 years of federal funding, but only for those counted in the 2020 census. Groton's 2010 census was 40,150, largely due to COVID-19. Our 2020 census completion rate was 70.3% last week. This leaves about 11,900 uncounted residents. The undercount will cost Groton $34.5 million annually, $345 million over 10 years. Budget categories won't change. We'll still have to fund schools, police, fire, public works, recreation, human services, senior services, and unknown COVID-19 costs. Also alert. If we don't pay federal taxes, they will remain unchanged. But census undercounts will reduce Groton revenue, shifting the burden to local taxpayers. If you don't pay taxes, losing federal money to census undercounts could reduce Groton's ability to provide services. Rich, poor, or middle class, we all suffer from a census undercount. Groton's Complete Count Committee has done an excellent job. Their census completion rate is higher than most Connecticut municipalities. Their excellent work must continue. But the Census Bureau's rule change ending data collection September 30th instead of October 31st destroyed their work plan timeline. We're left with stark choice. Wrap up a final September census push or accept the devastating consequences of a significant undercount. Tonight, we have 29 days left to mitigate the consequences of this Bureau's decision. It's unrealistic to hope we can get to 100%, but drawing on 35 years implementing community outreach programs, here are several strategies to consider. Whichever you choose, what's important is rapidly implementing a physically prudent, aggressive, or weak program to secure Groton's fiscal stability and continue our successful model of social cohesion. First, last month, the Groton Library Board considered implementing an enhanced final push. The effort has already begun. There's a letter that should be reaching you from Ms. Millie, our library director. Reference area and front desk staff now ask every patriot to cheer he has filled out the census. Those who say yes, and those who don't want any part of it are simply thanked. Those who haven't completed the census but are willing are offered immediate staff assistance to complete the census on a library computer. We won't add thousands to the census count, but a goal of 125 families, about 500 people, is attainable. That represents a $14.5 million clawback. Second, several municipalities have hired 18- to 25-year-olds from underreporting areas as temporary part-time door-to-door numerators. They canvass early evenings when folks are home for dinner. With 10 people working 20 hours a week for three weeks at $12, our total cost would be $7,200 less a bit of FICA taxes. Is that a prudent expenditure? Let's pretend that the project's a virtual bust with only one family of four signed up by the entire cohort over the three weeks. Yet these four enumerated residents would yield an additional $116,000 to Groton receipts over 10 years. Each hire numerates three families of four per week over the three-week period. That same $7,200 investment will improve the town's 10-year revenue stream by more than $10.4 million. We may do more or less than the three-week enumerated goal. The math is clear. A town cannot lose. Third, rapidly convene a Zoom meeting of town clergy. Seek their help in speaking from their pulpit on the importance of getting a full census census and the consequences to those most vulnerable. Refer those needing technical help to the Groton Public Library. Fourth, rapidly convene a Zoom meeting of town service and social club leaders. Their past engagement to benefit Groton's strong foundation behind their participation. If school district board members are painfully aware of the unbudgeted staffing and supply realities due to COVID-19, though some expenses may be reimbursed, they'll need help to avoid negative impacts to instructional integrity and students' learning outcomes. School district is not already doing so. Request them to distribute a Complete Count Committee information sheet for all families and school district employees. Sixth, rapidly communicate with Groton's largest employers, asking them to send a Groton Complete Committee-prepared final push document in hard copy or electronic format for all employees and local subcontractors. Seventh, rapidly develop a strategy with senior management that Groton's public, nonprofit, and private rehab, extended care, and independent living facilities who identify non-enumerated residents. They can choose, add or subtract. In short, work ahead is great. Consequences for an undercount are critical. Thank you for your courtesy.
Thank you, Mr. Schulman. Mr. Burke, that's all that I have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else?
I have no one else either.
Thank you. Before we start, I'll take my turn and everyone else does. We have response to citizens petitions, and Councilors Zepiri had his hand up.
Yes, Mr. Schulman, your presentation is very impressive. I wonder if you would be willing, if the council saw fit this evening, to develop an ad hoc committee to promote the completion of the census. Would you serve on that committee?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Councilors Zepiri, we already have a committee that is working on this. And that's one of the things I was going to mention was that Liz Porter has convened a committee including people from the library, people from the clergy, people from our largest employers, all the groups that Mr. Schulman mentioned. And they have been working diligently on this, and they are doing amazingly well. 70% may not sound like a lot, but that's well above where we were in prior years. So they've done, they've done an extraordinary job. That's not to say that we can't do more. And they certainly are doing a push to get more done. For example, today, they had a mobile questionnaire at the farmer's market in the city of Groton. And on Thursday night, will be another mobile questionnaire at Esker Point Beach for the Will Evans concert. But they are working very diligently, and they've done a tremendous job. Councilor Baumgartner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just to clarify, Mr. Schulman, some of the numbers you provided, I missed some of them. But what was your estimate? And if essentially no other individual signed up for the census prior to, you know, the deadline that was pushed up to September 31st? Based on your numbers, has the, how much would Groton stand to lose if no one else signed up?
The 2010 census was 40,000 roughly. So whatever we got over the last 10 years was based on that. We're now at 70.3% as of last week, at least, that's what I'm told. At roughly $2,900 per person per year, that shortfall of just under 12,000 comes to 34.5 million per year, $345 million over 10 years that we would not have because our census would be 28,000 instead of 40.
Thank you.
I've been wrong before, but to the best of my knowledge.
The Complete Count Committee has been putting out information on a regular basis with the statistics and the numbers. Councilor Bordelon.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming to speak before us. And the information is very helpful. And I congratulate the work that has been done by the committee already. It's not easy during COVID, I can imagine. Have we thought of trying to hand anything out at our resource building? Or is that already been being done, human resources at all? When folks, you know, go there, is there a way that we can capture?
Well, because they're still doing by appointment. We don't get a lot of foot traffic right now.
So it's only by appointment?
Yeah. And then senior centers closed. Library is the best place for foot traffic for the town besides probably the clerk's office and finance.
Have they thought about sending them in? Are we allowed to send them in on any of the mailings or tax? Well, the tax bills are probably going to be.
Yeah, certainly for that, yeah.
Those could have been sent in that, okay. All right, well, thank you. I think you proposed some great ideas, and hopefully we do capture some more folks in this. Thank you.
Again, the Complete Count Committee's been working on this for over a year, and they really have done a great deal of outreach. And they surpassed what was done in prior years. Councilor Franco.
So Mr. Schulman had suggested possibly hiring part-time door enumerators. Is this something that, Mr. Burke, you had thought about and see a potential maybe to get the last push and try and get as many people signed up as possible?
It's too short a timeframe for the town to do that. You'd have to acquire the money. And just coming up with job, you know, job description, training, advertising, interviewing, there's no way within four weeks. It's a great idea, but we would have needed a few months to do that.
We wouldn't be able to, like, maybe hire an outside company to help us?
I'm going to, I'm going to chime in here. The census workers are federal employees. So the best that we can do as a municipality, we've taken our lead from the lieutenant governor. The lieutenant governor reached out over a year ago and asked each town to form a Complete Count Committee. And we've, we've done what she has asked us to do and what is appropriate and proper. The best we can do as a council is to help publicize this. So on your social media feeds and, you know, just in talking to people, or if you have individual groups, you're at a PTA meeting, or you're at a, you know, business person's club or something like that, really make the push for it and try to promote what the Complete Count Committee has been doing. We're cut short by a month. So anything we can do to support their efforts that they have in place would be the most helpful at this point. And the library has been great as far as helping. Parks and Rec have helped us, you know, with the concert and everything. So I would say, if you'd like, I will send you an email with Liz Porter's email in it. And if you're interested in helping and what you can do as an individual counselor, I'd be happy to do that. And I'm sure she would be willing to talk to you about that. And I'm sure she'd enlist your help, so.
So can, so are, in his letter, he states that several municipalities have hired enumerators. So I'm just wondering, is that something we cannot do because they are federal employees? Or how are municipalities hiring?
I'm not sure, but they are federal employees. They have to be. If you've looked at any of the census material, they're, they have all their credentials and everything. That way, people are comfortable responding to the census, especially with everything that's been going on. It's very important that when you are asking someone for this very personal information, that they have the confidence that the person collecting that information is who they are supposed, who they're supposed to be, and that they are bound by law to maintain confidentiality. That's why it's the federal employees. I have not heard of private census collectors. So I would, I would say, talk to Liz Porter about that if you're interested in something like that. But as Mr. Burke said, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure what we can do at this point.
Right, thank you.
Councilor Zepiri has his hand up again, but I'll yield to anyone who hasn't spoken yet. Councilor Zepiri, you have?
Yes, Mr. Schulman. You sent us a very well-written memorandum to all the councilors. You had made some suggestions which may not be appropriate for a news item, but I think that a lot of what you said would be impressive in the newspaper. Would you consider amending your memorandum and put it in as a letter to the paper to try to alert the people of Groton that the town and they are missing out on a good deal of money by, by not completing the census?
One thing.
Go ahead, Mr. Burke.
One thing to point out is that if you do a letter to the paper, I believe it's 200 characters is the limit. Whereas maybe if you worked with the Census Count Committee, they could do an actual article using more of his information.
I was also going to suggest that there are two, two strategies or sub-strategies. One can be for me to ask Mr. Schwanier if he would be willing to take a op-ed piece which allows about 450 words. He's allowed that in the past. If a question came from the town rather than an individual, that'd be much stronger. The second piece is, while this is a Groton issue that we're considering, it's Groton. Every other town in the state, in most towns and municipalities in the country are at an undercount level now. So the focus can be on Groton. But we have to point out that our neighbors are also budget-suffering tremendously. So I think the perspective of a broader educational piece would might be useful. If you would like me to write something, I'll be glad to. I will only do it if it's something you would like. I'm not going to move into your territory.
Mr. Schulman, you are, you are free to do any kind of outreach that you would like. And I'm sure the Complete Count Committee would be appreciative if you'd like to talk to Ms. Porter and conference with her. I'm sure she'd be willing to speak with you as well.
Happily. They have done a wonderful job. They have been just thwarted by this last-minute change because their schedule was doing very well. 70% on the final month. It would have been well-positioned to get much, much higher. We've lost 31 days. It's not their fault.
Also, if I may, the GMTV is always publishing notices between items that they have. If we had a notice on GMTV that went up on a regular basis, that would be helpful. And I can't, having read what you've said to us and having heard your presentation tonight, I can't think of anyone better to do it than you. I'm not, as you, as you're well aware now, I wasn't familiar with what Liz Porter and her crew were doing. But I think we, I think if we publicize the fact that the town is losing a great deal of money, that it will have to make up in the form of property taxes if we don't get the money that comes to us through inadequate and complete census, then each person in the town is going to have to pay the difference from their own pockets. I'd like to drive this point home as strongly as possible. And the presentation that you made to us certainly drives it home to me.
First of all, I want to point out that the library and the committee have done a number.
Thank you, Mr. Schulman. Councilor Bordelon.
... recorded announcements on GMTV and have done a good job. If you feel a citizen's presentation would be helpful, just let them know, and I'm available to do whatever you want me to do.
Thank you, Mr. Schulman. Councilor Bordelon.
Thank you. I was just aligning my marks with Councilor Zepiri. I was also just kind of sitting here thinking, maybe the Groton Times, one article possibly right before the last push might, I don't know, be helpful. I'm not sure if our town can submit something, or does it have to come from a private citizen? But maybe the Groton Times, which, you know, folks just kind of get, you know, at their doorsteps. And it's always nice, not just the fly, you know, the sales flyers, but the front article kind of speaks for itself sometimes. So is there a way that we, as a town, can do that? Or does that have to be personally driven? I guess.
Certainly, if Schulman wrote it, we could ask, you know, ask them to put it in the, in the paper there.
Is that something that we have to, like, agree upon to have done? Or just ask someone in general to write it? Or use the gentleman tonight that presented that type of article? Because I just, I think, yes, it's, it's a, it's a broad issue for all towns. And maybe the local paper, but also our, our own town paper that comes to our door would be helpful. So I'm just.
Councilor Overy. Welcome, Councilor Overy.
Thank you. I apologize for being late. Knowing Matthew, I know that whatever he does is done with excellence. So I think, I think if you called the times, they would probably be more than happy to write, run your presentation. And thank you for all you've done since you've become active with, with us in the town.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schulman. And if you need help getting those contacts, please feel free to email. And I can put you in touch with the reporter at the day. That's where the Groton Times gets all their information from there. So feel free to reach out if you are interested in following up. And I appreciate you raising this issue for us this evening, sir. Have a good night.
Thank you so much. Have a blessed night.
Thank you, you too. All right, we are on to consent calendar. And I'm going to ask that Councilor Melendez take 2024-821, various appointments and reappointments, please.
Okay, um, let me see here. 2021.
This is on page three in your packet.
In the packet.
Various reappointments, June, July.
Okay. Do you want me to just read their names?
Yeah, if you could just make the motion, please, sir.
Okay. Page three. I'm not seeing the.
We normally move the whole consent calendar, but because this was written up and presented as a separate resolution, that's why I'm breaking it out this way. The clerk.
I see with the motion. Okay, I make a motion to recommend a resolution appointing the following individuals to the authorized ABCs as noted. Appoint Kenneth Segal to the Housing Authority and appoint Craig Tobias to the Shellfish Commission. So.
Second.
By Melendez and seconded by Zepiri. Chairman Melendez, did you wish to give any information on these two appointments?
Just that they, they were both voted unanimously by the Personnel and Appointments Committee.
Thank you. Okay. Councilor Franco.
So I'd just like to confirm on this, the Shellfish Commission, it expires in 12/31/21. Is this a replacement to finish a term? Or is this a newly appointed?
Yeah, he's, actually, it was, it was two people that had stepped down recently. And these are to fulfill the remainder of the term.
I have read it, information that do, does the chair of the Shellfish Commission usually just reappoint somebody to finish the term? Or do we, as a council, do that? I'm questioning on how this is actually carried out.
I believe you, when, when someone from the, the voting body resigns or leaves, you move someone up from the, from the alternates up to their spot. Believe this body has five regular and three alternates, if I remember correctly.
The clerk has her hand up. Madam Clerk, did you wish to interject in this discussion?
Well, Councilor Melendez was doing an excellent job. I was just going to elaborate that this particular situation is Craig Tobias is an alternate currently. And the chairman and the secretary recently resigned. So we're very fortunate to have Mr. Tobias interested in taking that position. So I think that the letter, it was a letter from the commission urging the council to, to let this happen. But it is the council's pleasure of moving people from one position to another. Although council usually equuses to commissioners' wishes, so to speak. But anyway, that's, that's the deal. And it is, those are five-year terms normally. So if it were a new appointment, it would be a five-year term. This is filling a seat, just like Councilor Melendez explained.
Thank you. I was just questioning the process. Nothing against Mr. Tobias at all. I was just curious about the process on this because I had recently read something that maybe I'm, I'm maybe misinformed. Thank you.
I'm going to just interrupt for one second. Madam Clerk, normally, we move the consent calendar all as one, but I noticed that you had the separate resolution. So that's why I broke out the vacancies. And then what we will do with the minutes in the trust fund, we'll move those as one. Is that acceptable, Madam Clerk?
Certainly. Unfortunately, I don't write the agendas. That's put together by the town manager's office. And, and the mayor usually has some, some business with what goes on the agenda. So I don't, I don't really know how these, how these were set up this way differently than anything else. But any, any way, any way you want to handle it, Madam Mayor, that's fine with me.
All right. I thought, I thought the clerk's office was the clerk of the council. That's why I ask. All right, seeing no further discussion, we will vote on 2024-82, various appointments and reappointments. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. So Councilor Baumgartner, now, would you move the rest of the consent calendar, please?
Yes, I will move the rest of the consent calendar, which consists of, does, does that consist of the items that are included on page? Well, it says page one, but it's after page, would be page three? So page four?
The special trust fund contributions?
Yeah. So the special meeting minutes for August 11th. Resolve. Yeah, I'm sorry. It was just the motion wasn't the same as moving the consent calendar.
Right, I know. It's.
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, which consists of items on various appointments and reappointments for June and July, the special meeting minutes from August 11, 2020, and the special trust fund contributions for August. And would you like me to read the name?
Well, let's get a second first, please.
Yeah.
Second.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Bordelon. At this point, yes, if you would, Councilor Baumgartner, if you would read the people that have donated to the special trust funds, please. You don't have, please don't give the amounts, just the names, please.
And I'm sorry, which page would that be included?
This is page 14. Okay, let me see, let me check. Yes.
Page 14. Okay, found it. All right. So the following individuals contributed to various special trust funds. And they include anonymous Lee Vincent, Cheryl Watwa, Linda in. And they include anonymous Lee Vincent, Cheryl Watwa, Linda Johansson, and Robert Ashworth, Joan Feeney, Elks 2163, Three Rs Company, Walter Grant, Lloyd and Ellen Hutchins, Marion Lamb, Rosaleen Catherine Rathbun, Melanie Barber, Marsha Sidron, William and Susan Pioski, Jason Richardson, and Amy Madison, and Annette Rose. Thank you so much for your contributions. Many contributions have gone to the Grotton Foot Locker. And, you know, we're very appreciative of, you know, our constituents and fellow residents' generosity. So moved, or I don't think it needs to be moved. It's already been moved.
Thank you. Any discussion on either of the two items? Seeing none, we will vote on the rest of the consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to communications and reports. Town councilors. And Mr. Burt is back. We will begin with Counselor Baumgartner, please.
Nothing to report other than had a public safety committee meeting two weeks ago. Joe will cover in the committee reports. I do have a question for Mr. Burt. Had another follow-up email or mail letter from, from Mr. Fitzgerald. And just wondering if you could provide a, a response to the question. I know he posed it and shared it, that letter with our town clerk and other town elected officials.
Sure. As of this moment, all signs that we can legally have up are up. I can't put any others up at this point. However, I did receive the draft opinion from the attorney today. I've got to review it and get a finalized opinion. But my intent is, on Fort Rachel, excuse me, on the Fort Rachel access, my intent, if the mayor's okay with it, is to have our attorney come next week to update the council.
Okay. And, and also, thank you, Mr. Burt. And before I pass it off, I attended the We Have a Dream reception at the Public Library. Beautiful, beautiful showing. And just like to thank our two councilors that serve on DEI that were part of organizing, both Counselor Melendez and Counselor Parker also did a great job presenting themselves. So go Grot. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
I did attend the We Have a Dream event. Thanks to all who attended and the DEI group that put together was wonderful, working with a group of diverse people to come together. It was, it was a moving event. And again, thanks Cindy, Grotton Public Library, all the members of DEI group, Counselor Melendez, thank you for emceeing. It was a good event.
Thank you. Counselor Franco.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Counselor Heed.
Also attended the We Have a Dream event Friday at the Public Library. And it was pretty incredible. So thank you to Juan, Juliette, and the staff, I'm sorry, Counselor Melendez, Counselor Parker, and the entire staff. Cindy in particular did an outstanding job.
Counselor O'Gree.
We had a beautification committee meeting. And we've had to make some changes to that again, because our bulbs couldn't get here in time. Maybe I mentioned this last time. But we've now moved it to October 2nd. It'll be at the Senior Center, the circle in front of it will be selling bulbs to raise money. When the sign goes in at the intersection of 117 and Route 1, we will be prepared to do plantings and then move forward with the rest of the town with that. And let me see. I also want to mention, maybe already Ben mentioned, the fact that the prospectus for the Pleasant Valley School has gone out looking for developers now to come in and make proposals as to what they'd like to do with that property. So their Economic Development Department is moving forward on that.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelain?
Thank you. Nothing to report.
Counselor Melendez?
Yeah, I just, I just want to just thank the whole DEI committee for, for working so hard to get the, the event going. And, and it was, it was a success. So I, I know we're going to put on a whole bunch of other events, and I hope they're as successful as that one was. And again, I just want to thank the town for, for listening to its citizens. And yeah, I just look forward to doing some more good work.
Thank you. Counselors Zepiri. Counselors Zepiri, do you have anything to communicate?
Sorry, I was muted. No report. Thank you.
Counselor Franco, you have your hand up. Did you wish to add something?
Yes, actually, I have a question for the Town Manager. Should I wait until it's, until he speaks, or?
Yes, please. So we made it through, looking at the list to make sure I got everybody. Okay, so then I just wanted to also convey my gratitude to the DEI Committee of the Town of Grotton. Councilors Melendez and Parker did an excellent job in participating in that. And Ms. Olson from the Parks Department, Mr. Locken, so many people had a hand in making this event something that the town could very, very much be proud of. And I just wanted to wish all the teachers and students and parents good luck with the new school year. Stay safe and learn something new. Clerk of the representative town meeting?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The RTM will be meeting September 9th. It will be via Zoom. So it will be publicized that way. And anyone who cares to watch can either watch live or, as all of our town meetings, they can watch on YouTube. Okay?
Clerk of the council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I did want to bring something to your attention, which came to me this afternoon. And it's something that I think is important that citizens are aware of. There's a company out of Fresno, California, that is sending notice of, of recordings of peoples, of individuals' deeds on land records. There is no such recording being done in actuality, but the paperwork certainly looks authentic. And they're, they're charging people funds. And people are, if they don't bring it to officials' attention, they're paying these fees. So it's very disturbing to the town clerks, obviously, but it should be much more disturbing to the citizens. Please, if you get a notice of recording and it doesn't have the town clerk's name on it, it's not real. It's not real.
So then they should reach to you and the Clerk's office to verify anything before they take any actions?
Absolutely. Our doors are partially open, but our phones are very much open.
And if you could just refresh everybody's memory where your office is located, please? Because it's not a common place for normal people to be going to town hall, so.
Okay. So if you're familiar where Dairy Queen is located, that's on Fort Hill Road. We're Kitty Corner from there, on the corner of Depot Road and Fort Hill, at 45 Fort Hill. Fitch Middle School, which is now our community center, is, is it parking lot over from us? So we're on the same side as that. And our phone number is 860-441-6640.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Baumgartner, is your hand for Mr. Burt, or did you have a question for the clerk?
For the clerk. Unrelated, though.
Go ahead.
Yes, Madam Clerk, I just have a question regarding the absentee ballots. And, you know, maybe, I know probably, you know, our next council meeting will be in October. And by then, some folks will have already requested, if not received, their absentee ballots. My question is, I know the process has changed a bit in terms of how your office deals with the absentee ballot applications. Previously, the applications were sent from the mailhouse, which is sort of unprecedented for an election cycle. So maybe just for the purposes of the public, if you could explain some of those changes and how the public should prepare in advance?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. There's a couple of things to remember. There really is not a change for the cycle of absentee ballots this year. I've been sending out applications since the beginning of the year to anyone who's requested an application for an absentee ballot. And this is all over the world, not just in our backyard. So, but the process for the primary, for those that were participating, which is a very small number in comparison to the whole population of voters. We have many more people that are not associated with a political party, so they have no idea what happened in August. So, but that, that I hope never happens again. I think that it's very dangerous to take the duty from distributing ballots out of the hands of those that know how to deliver ballots. So what we've been told, the clerks have been told, is the Secretary of the State will be sending applications to get a ballot. There's going to be rolling these mailings out starting September 8th. And I don't know when they expect to be completed. But in the meantime, I'm not going to tell someone they can't get an application. Absolutely, you can download one from our website. You can download one from the Secretary of the State's website, for that matter. Or you can call our office and we'll send, we'll mail one to you. Or you can come in person and pick one up. And so we have a lot of activity going on. We've, we've mailed out over 500 applications already. So, you know, it's, it's pretty busy. As far as the ballots themselves, those will be available October 2nd. That's statute. That's not ever changed. It's 21 days for a primary. It's 31 days for any regular election that ballots are available. So come October 2nd, you can go in person to the town clerk's office and cast a ballot. It won't be counted until Election Day. Don't ever think that, when you're sitting back there counting your, you know, let's see how Counselor Baumgartner voted. No, no, they're sealed. You, you deliver them sealed, they stay sealed. And then the proper authorities open them on Election Day and count them. So let's see, October 2nd, that's the day that anyone who's applied for an application, by application, will be sent a ballot by mail. But again, you can come in person. We're open. Our doors are open, but we'll be glad to mail them to you, too. Now, we do have an outside box for, for receiving ballots. If you, if you are worried about coming into the town hall, you can place your ballot in the official ballot box or the standard forest green town clerk-only box. It's, it's always been there and always will be. That's nestled between the US Post Box and the UPS Dropbox. So the, so there's two receptacles that you can use to drop your application or your ballot. So if you don't want to use the mail. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, Town Manager, Mr. Burt, are you available? Counselor Franco has a question for you.
Yes. Yeah, I'm having some trouble with my internet tonight. For some reason, it's cutting in and out, but I seem okay right now, so I'll hurry.
Can we let Counselor Franco go first, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
So as we had passed our budget, we had allocated funding for human resources to do diversity training and of town staff. Since have a DEI group. And I, I would like to have it clarified. There's DEI group, which I had thought was part of like human resources. And they were going to train the staff and maybe elected officials and boards and committees on diversity and maybe hiring practices. And now we have a DEI group that is doing diversity, equality, and inclusion. And they're doing town events and, and such. And can you explain how all this goes together? Because I was confused on this matter. How this all fits together?
Sure. And just to go back in a little bit of history. When I first got here, I talked to HR about, you know, my, my wish to increase the diversity. We went to trainings. Jerry Locken went with us, Bob Zagami. So Parks, Rec, and Human Resources. And afterwards, ended up starting just a employee-led DEI mostly for hiring practices, which is, you know, recent, in the last year or so, has expanded greatly. It was actually the DEI Committee who recommended hiring the outside agency to do trainings for our different agencies, for employees, for the public as space allows. As we discussed at the budget hearings, we had to have a place to put that money. So it was put under human resources. The outreach and the other things are totally separate from actual trainings. The trainings are formalized, you know, trainings that are given by that outside company. These events are just things that the DEI Committee is doing to improve relations with the community. So they're two, you know, intertwined, but also separate. So this is the training, the trainings they're sponsoring in terms of the outside agency is what was presented to the council.
Okay, thank you, because I was confused, wasn't really sure what the DEI Committee was about. And, um, thank you. So I appreciate that.
Mr. Burt, you have a...
Oh, sorry. I played it out there for a moment. I, of course, attended the Martin Luther King Junior Event on Friday. It was outstanding. We had excellent speakers and thankful to everyone who put it on. And it was really good. The Economic Development Commission has been active passing out those masks for COVID to different businesses along with the signs. So I know they've been scrambling getting that out to the different businesses. I'm not sure if they're done yet. There's an EDC meeting on Thursday, so I'll learn more about it then. Finance Department, just to mention, the Town of Grotton received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financing, financial reporting. It's the 26th year in a row the town has received this, so that's pretty good. And then Stonington, First Select Woman, Cheesebro, had reached out to me. She was talking with some constituents about plantings and things to do on their end of the bridge. And I wanted to make sure, hey, let's not do anything, I want to make sure nothing permanent is done until we have a chance to talk. So I had emailed her to ask if she'd be interested in meeting with the council. She said sure, and her finance board chair would be interested. And I said, of course, you know, that's great. Would you be willing to do a Zoom meeting with the council? And then, of course, First Select Women Strunk and Downey are invited, too. So I'm waiting to hear back from her further. But I'll get with the council about scheduling something. And if you have a format you're interested, you know, that the council as a whole wants different, let me know. But I am trying to set something up, because I want to make sure nothing permanent goes in. And that's all I have.
Okay. A long... Yes, I just, I was going to ask if you wanted to review the open agenda items, but we can take questions first. So I heard O'Gree, Parker, and I see Bordelain, so.
Mr. Manager, you said Stonington was going to be doing some kind of plantings?
They have a request from residents on their side to do something. So I took, she emailed me to say she wanted to get together to talk about it. So I took that opportunity to invite them to meet with the town council.
Okay, it might be, it might be good if you brought in the, I don't know what their plan is, but maybe at least have them listen in would be the Mystic Garden Club and the Beautification Committee.
Sure, you know, whoever the council wants, you know, I'm thinking that they'll attend a council meeting virtually. And whoever you want me to invite, I'd be glad to invite.
Well, I think probably the Mystic Garden Club and the Grotton Beautification Committee would be, would be good, because we're all trying to put plans together for the future.
Right.
Counselor Parker?
Mr. Burt, since Town Clerk mentioned that information about scams, would it be possible for that to be posted on the town website and Facebook?
We lost him.
Yeah, I think we lost him again.
Okay, I'll email him.
Yes, that would be great, thank you. Bordelain, do you want to go ahead? I'm not sure if he's there or not, but you can get on.
I'm back again.
Oh, he's back.
I'm back again. Wait, I don't know what's going on with the internet. After this question, I'm going to try my iPad, see if I have better luck than this laptop.
Councilor Parker, did you want to restate your question for Mr. Burt?
I'll email him still.
Okay, thank you.
I think, oh, I'm sorry.
Councilor Bordelain?
Thank you. I was just wondering, the discussion about the plantings, I think it's great to talk with them and, you know, come up with a joint plan. Would it be appropriate to discuss any other items that are pertinent to Groton at that time? Are we just talking about plantings at this point?
I would say if you have other, I don't want to speak for the mayor, but just my own thought is, if you had other, if the council is a, you know, had something else they wanted to, as a body, speak with them, I could run it by them to see if they're interested also in discussing it. But I'll let the mayor handle how that would be decided.
I know there is interest in discussing the bridges, and if Mr. Burt has already made an overture to invite them to a meeting on other issues, then perhaps you can also float the invitation, and so they're prepared to discuss. Having said that, then, I think we need to have that discussion prior to this meeting, then. But yes, that's certainly, certainly a possibility.
Okay, that was my question, thinking that it'd be appropriate time, as I discussed at the last meeting, it'd be great to discuss with them now before budget season. My other question is the format of our meetings, the way they're televised. How is that decided, as far as like how it transitions on screens or what have you? I guess what I'm going is, is I've seen some other meetings, and I just thought it would be helpful for our meeting, that, you know, right now, when you watch it, it kind of, if someone makes a little rattling of a noise, it pops up on the screen, and then it kind of comes back if somebody's talking. And I was just wondering if it would be more efficient to televise it, kind of like in the view that I'm watching now. I was watching Westerly's town council meeting, and I saw some others on a news station, and what they do is, they have everybody on there. And that's important, too, because then people can see, you know, if someone does lose connection and it drops off, but also, you know, it helps with the dialogue, and I think it'd be more efficient. So I was just considering, you know, I know the GMTV filmer is here, and I was just wondering, is there a way that that could be done? That's my first question.
That's more of a setting, that's more of a setting for the host to do. I also think there's a setting, I believe there's a setting in Zoom that allows that it won't just suddenly switch over for every noise, but I have to look more into that.
Yeah, I mean... What's to do? Yeah, is the filmer here now? Is he able to answer any of those questions? Yeah. Yeah. Right. Yeah. Right. Yeah. Yeah. Right. Yeah. Yeah. Right. Yeah. 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 Right. Yeah. 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 Right. Yeah. 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 Well, thank you for that clarification. That would make sense. I was just thinking, like, tonight even, there's, you know, this is a typical council meeting, and it would be helpful for the dialogue. And I even saw where they would, like, click if someone was going to speak to something, they changed it back to the original setting to have just that person and then back. So I was just checking to see what types of other features we had to, you know, help with, like, the random background noises that pop on if someone's mic is on and things like that, just to make it. I think we're doing a great job, just, was just watching it and critiquing how we could maybe possibly improve or change. Thank you. Thank you, and I think it is helpful, because one of the things that makes it kind of tough in some of the feedback that I had received, you know, when you're at a town council meeting, we're all nine members up there, so there's a dialogue, right? But when the screen jumps, there's really, you don't really get to see the full dialogue or discussion, you know? And I think it is helpful. And then as we pop out, like, one time, you know, sometimes your internet goes and you pop out of the meeting, it's good for the people at home to see, but I wasn't part of that discussion for a minute, and then I zoomed back, you know, I came back on, so people can, you know, see that as well. So, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Burt, did you have anything else to report?
I do not.
Thank you. We don't have any department heads, I don't believe. The superintendent is not here, and I think that's it. Councilor Bordelain, is your hand a new, or is that, did I forget the lower?
It's a new, but I forgot to ask. I wanted to see if there's any update on any diversity hiring or any of the recruiting, as well as any COVID updates for the town. I know that we receive them via email, but I just, you know, for people who watch from home, just any updates that the town manager could give, thank you.
No update on diversity at this point, other than the DEI committee is formalizing their subcommittees, one of which will be about hiring practices. I've got some information, the latest on COVID, if people would like to hear it, on numbers. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, thank you.
The latest for the town of Groton is 153 cases we've had so far and 25 deaths statewide. The number of COVID cases so far is 52,879. That's up by 384 from the last state report within a day or two before. Total COVID-associated deaths, 4,465, that's zero change from the last one. Patients currently hospitalized with COVID, 52, that's a change of minus eight from the last one, so in the positive direction there. And then COVID-19 tests reported, 1,170,970 done so far, which is a change of 45,572 since the last report. That's what I have.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. All right. Councilor Franco, did you have a question on this for Mr. Burt?
Yes. I have noticed in the past couple days, this week, I work at Byd Norwich Hospital, and they have a COVID testing drive-through, and the line has been enormous. I have never seen it so long. Would you have any idea, like, what's going on that would make these lines so long? I mean, I understand that there was the college testing that had to be done, and it seems like we're past that bump, but now, there is an enormous amount of people in line to get COVID-tested this week, and I was just wondering if you have any insight from the meetings you might attend with Ledlight.
I haven't heard anything, but I will ask Steve Mansfield, the Director of Ledlight, to see if he's heard anything. I'll let the council know if he has any information.
Thank you.
Counselors of Perry?
Last week, we, at the committee of the whole meeting, we spent some time discussing the ideas of prioritizing bridge repairs, tax abatements for seniors, veterans, and disabled, as well as extending sewage and city water throughout the town. And generally, the council was in favor of that. How do we keep that from getting so far on a back burner that it falls off the stove? I noticed we have a list of open agenda items that we'll consider sometime tonight, but those are items that have been given numbers, as they've been considered for resolutions in the past. I'd like to see, you know, we decided, we actually did create a priority list for those three items, but everybody was generally in favor of them, so I'd like to see us keep them on a current list so that we continue to consider them.
Just, this is John. Two of the items are on that list right there, the bridge repairs and the tax abatement. They'll stay on the list till they're completed, and as I mentioned earlier, I've made some progress on the bridge one. I did, my understanding, when they voted, when you, the council voted on the two last week, I did not think that the council was interested in pursuing the sewer and water at this point, but I could be wrong. Please correct me if that council had a differing opinion.
My feeling, it was the third most important for the council, but nonetheless, it's something that we could continue to look at as we're looking at the economic development of the town. And I had a feeling that the council generally was in agreement with me, but I had bad feelings all the time, and I get misled. I often think that Leanne loves me, but I may be under some kind of delusion there, too.
Never.
Yeah. Counselor Aubrey had her hand up?
Gee, Joe threw me off there. Oh, gosh, I'm sorry, I'll have to come back in a minute.
Okay. Counselor Bordelain?
Thank you. Counselors of Perry just brought something up that triggered another note I had here. Looking at the, one of the items that was brought up for people who have financial concerns, I know it's, one of the items was stated, poor and unable to pay. Is it possible that you could send what is currently drafted as to what was the process for people to come before the council, just so I can start to review that in advance before we start to even talk about that item?
Yeah, as I think Cindy mentioned last week, the Finance Department will gather information. She's out this week, so, and I know they've got, they're at a critical point on some of the financial software, so it might be a few weeks, I'm not sure, but I'll remind her.
Okay, because that would be great to just look at, to think about, trying to see where that could be amended or fixed. Thank you.
Counselor Aubrey?
I remembered where my mind was. I was kind of under the impression that the head of Public Works was talking a little bit about a report that had been done on sewer and water projects and was going to come back to us with some additional information, so that maybe we could at least pick a area to work forward on.
I think Mr. Hanover sent that out, didn't he? Did you get that in your email?
I'll check, I'll check.
That's what you were referring to.
I did, I did send that out to everybody.
Okay, thank you. I'll find it.
If you don't, let me know, and I'll resend it.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody's jumping. Counselor Franco?
Would it be possible to also add to the outstanding, the open agenda items, the actuary overview of future debt in relation to our budget, a possible presentation on that?
Oh.
I can't hear you, John.
Really lumped under the road bonding.
I didn't hear you.
You had, you cut out, Mr. Burt, could you try, please?
We planned on doing that report with the road bonding item.
So it's just...
Can you hear me?
Yes, is it going to be just in relation to the road bonding, or is it going to be an education of what the town stands financially?
A little broader about what kind of debt we have. And then if you want more, you know, once you see that report, then you can, we can go out for more. We have to ask specific things, and what the council asked for prior, we had asked for, from our finance person for bonding.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are on to room numeral nine, committee reports. Nothing from Committee of the Whole. Temporary rules is now just plain old rules, so let's go to personnel and appointments next. Personnel and appointments, do you have anything to report, Chairman Melendez?
Well, the only meeting we had, we sort of discussed in the consent calendar, so nothing really to report.
Thank you. Rules, Chairman Aubrey?
Yes, I wanted to thank Conrad, Counselor Heed, for sending out the reminder of the changes we had made in the past. I think you probably all got this, talking about, we had actually made some clarifications as far as when we were talking and when we weren't, in length of time. Did you all get this?
No.
I don't believe so. If you could forward that to the whole council, please?
Okay, I'll, I'll get it to somebody. It says up, I guess maybe it came just to me, but just a reminder, back in August 27th of last year, we actually had, under New Business, Point of Water referral submitted by counselors at Water Franco and Heed seeking clarification on Rule 11-B, should questions be allowed during citizens' petitions or during the response to citizens' petitions? So I'll get that, because it goes further, then it goes on to time and so forth. So we already do have something there that everybody's been kind of looking for, and we'll review this at our next rules meeting also.
I believe those changes were made, yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Public safety, Chairman Baumgartner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and about two weeks ago, we met as a committee, consisting of myself, Counselors, Counselor Bordelain, and Counselor Heed. We had the privilege of hosting three individuals who came to, not so much testify, but offer their perspective and their expertise and guidance on some of the work our committee is doing, which is really looking at two items. One, establishing a civilian police review board, as well as just sort of a general kind of review of policing policies. We were graced with Tamer Linier from the New London NWCP, as well as a representative from the ACLU who serves as their policy counsel, which provide, they both provided a, really a dearth of knowledge on establishing police civilian review boards. In fact, their policy counsel was involved in drafting the state legislation, the police accountability legislation, so, and as well as Carmelita Hodge, who is the faculty advisor at Fitch for the Groton Youth Collective, and, you know, she was going to share, we were able to kind of learn about some of the advocacy work Groton Youth Collective has been doing this month, and they would certainly love to continue to be a part of our process. So we will keep you up to date with the work we're doing, and especially when we get closer to drafting any kind of policy or ordinance. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. We are on to New Business, 10A, 2025591, Alteration of Ascenic Road, 1206 River Road. This is on page 18 in your packet. I believe we are on Counselor Parker?
Resolution to set a public hearing for alteration of Ascenic Road, 1206 River Road. Whereas Article 5 of the Groton Code of Ordinances, Designation of Scenic Roads prohibits a scenic road from being altered or improved, including but not limited to widening of the right of way or of traveled portion of the highway, paving changes of grade, straightening, removal of stone walls, and removal of dead, no, mature trees, except for good cause determined by the council after a public hearing. And whereas Tom Paul Antino, Paul Antonio, excuse me, owner of 1206 River Road, has requested the town council hold a public hearing to solicit public input regarding the alteration of the River Road right-of-way in order to construct a new driveway, now therefore be it resolved that the town council will hold a public hearing regarding the alteration of River Road on October 6, 2020. I so move.
Move by Parker and seconded by Zepary. And for the public to know, we discuss these items in great length in Committee of the Whole, so that's why there isn't much discussion this evening. Any comments or questions? Counselor Baumgartner?
Yes, and I know we had talked about this previously, so I will be brief, but just a question for whomever may be able to answer it, they may not be here. but just a question for whomever may be able to answer it. They may not be here. Maybe that should be directed at Public Works, but just kind of the process that, again, River Road is a scenic road, so is it true whenever there are changes made to River Road or changes to properties of budding River Road that we, as a council, we would have to vote on it?
Yes, Mr. Burton is not here, but yes, that's why this item came before. So anytime any, any changes as stated in the first whereas are proposed, it has to come before the council.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk?
Just to, the most important thing about the scenic road process is the public hearing, because adjacent property owners might have more information than is previously given to counselled by Public Works and so forth. So the public hearing is very important. It was, you know, it was a public hearing that started this whole process to have scenic roads. And it could, you know, it's up to the, it's up to the council, but it's a good, it's a good idea to have the public hearings anyway.
Yes. Okay, we will vote on 2025-59. All those in favor, please say aye.
Madam Mayor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, yes.
I think Councilor Bordelone had her hand raised.
I'm sorry, I did not see it when I looked at the screen to see if anyone else had comments. I see no hands right now. Councilor Bordelone, do you have a comment or question?
I do. I just think, is it possible that it, as after looking at this and thinking back, the owners of the property, they did state that they were going to try to keep the visual appearance similar to what is already there doing. I know one of the questions I had asked, they were talking about how, you know, the lip will be paved per the requirement, but they were going to keep it, you know, more of the stone and keep the natural look. Do you think that should be written in here too as part of the resolution? Or not really indicative, it just be discussed at the time?
All we're doing right now is setting the public hearing. So at that point, then, the public is invited to come before us. Mr. Paul Antonio, his family can come before us and discuss things. So this is just the very first step that has to be taken, is for us to set this public hearing.
Gotcha. I just think it's, I think it's great that, I guess I was trying to capture was the fact that I think it's great that they're looking to keep the natural state. So that's, that's great to know. Thank you.
Okay, I'm looking, I don't see any hands. All right, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of 2025-59, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to 2025-65, FYE 2021 CIP, Fitch High School Athletic Facilities. This is on page 19, I believe. And I think we are on Counselor Franco.
Thank you. I make a resolution authorizing the allocation of $12,500 of capital reserve fund unassigned fund balance for FYE 2021 Capital Reserve Project entitled Fitch High School Athletic Facilities. Whereas $300,000 was approved in FYE 2020 for CIP Project 5I for resurfacing of the tennis courts at Fitch High School. And whereas the low bid for the project was $356,000 and the Board of Education has allocated the additional $56,000 from the Board of Ed operating budget. And whereas, it was determined that the pathway between the two tennis courts should also be repaved. And this work was complete, completed during the resurfacing of the tennis courts at a cost of $12,500. And whereas this pathway repaving was not included in the FYE 2020 CIP Project FI, I mean, Project 5I, or in the low bid cost of $356,000. Therefore be resolved that an allocation of $12,500 from the Capital Reserve Fund unassigned fund balance is approved for FYE 2021 Project 5I, Fitch High School Athletics for Tennis Courts Pathway Paving. I so move.
Second, Bordelone.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Bordelone. And again, we've had discussion in Committee of the Whole. That's how we get things to council. I see no hands, so I will call for a vote on 2025-65. All those in favor, please say aye.
Whoa, excuse me, excuse me, pardon me, pardon me. Can you please include referral to the RTM in that resolution? Sorry, you didn't see my hand.
Oh, it was there, was it not read?
No, it was not.
It is included in the resolution.
Correct, but it wasn't read.
Okay, Councilor Franco, would you just add that on, please? It's.
Do we need to remove the second?
I think we're good. If you created in, you're good.
And refer to the RTM. I so move.
And Councilor Bordelone, do you second that as, as Councilor Franco said? Thank you. Mr., give me one second, please. Mr. Burton, are you here? I know you're having some connection issues. All right, very good. We're on the CIP for Athletic Facilities. It was just moved and I'm not seeing any hands. So I will call for a vote on 2025-65. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hold on one second. Councilor Heed, are you opposed?
Looks like he's frozen.
Yes, yes, he is. And there's no storm tonight and everybody's having issues. All right, so, so we have. Councilor Heed, are you opposed?
I'm in favor. There's a delay with my, I said aye, not.
Are there any abstentions? All right, so that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Counselor Heed, your, your face was frozen and that's how I would imagine your mugshot to be.
Frozen again.
Okay, so we are on to, this will be, do we dare try Counselor Heed on this one? Counselor Heed, we are on 2023-09, one changes to the Town of Groton TIF policy. Do you think you can, your connection's okay?
No, I'm gonna pass. And let someone.
All right, Councilor Obray, do you have that one that you could read this, please? This would be on page 20 in your packet. And you're muted. There you go.
Okay, resolution, just, no, I'm sorry. God. I apologize to that. Resolution to set a public hearing for policy amendments to the Tax Increment Financing Plan. You want the whole thing? The whole thing?
Yes, please.
Whereas the Town of Groton adopted a tax increment financing policy on March 6, 2018, which outlines the process of planning for reviewing, approving and implementing TIF district. And whereas the state of Connecticut recently made some changes to the TIF, enabling legislation which requires minor changes to our TIF policy. And whereas the City of Groton adopted their TIF policy and there were a few minor items that they changed in their policy that requires us to make changes to our policy. And whereas the town staff, working in cooperation with the town attorney's office in Cameron, has created a revised Town of Groton TIF policy. And whereas the Economic Development Commission, serving in their role as the TIF Advisory Committee, was presented with these changes at their July 9, 2020 meeting for discussion purposes, now therefore be it resolved that the town council will refer the TIF policy to the Economic Development Commission for their review. And furthermore, the town council will hold a public hearing regarding amendments to the TIF policy on October 6, 2020. I so move.
Second, Parker. Moved by Obray and seconded by Parker. And again, this was presented at our Committee of the Whole and we are simply setting a public hearing right now regarding the minor changes to the TIF policy. And I see no hands, so we will vote on 2023-09, Changes to the Town of Groton TIF Policy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Some moved unanimously. And we are on to 2020-5641, Telecommunicator Pension Retiree Health Agreement. This is on page 21 in your packet. And I believe we are on Counselor Melendez.
I think, no, but that's fine. You can go.
I'm sorry, Councilor Bordelone, go ahead.
Oh, it's all right. You can take it.
I apologize.
Don't worry, taking it, I don't.
Yeah, I'll do it. I make a motion recommending a resolution approving the successor pension retiree health agreement between the Town of Groton and Groton Telecommunicators Association for the term of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2025. Whereas the Pension Retiree Health Agreement for the Groton Telecommunicators Association, United Electrical Local 222 Connecticut Independent Labor Union Local 86 Incorporated, affiliated with United Electrical, Radio and Machine Workers of America, expired on June 30, 2020. And whereas the Town of Groton and the Telecommunicators Association reached a tentative agreement on July 21, 2020. And whereas approval was recommended by town staff, therefore be resolved, the town council hereby approves the successor pension retiree health agreement between the Town of Groton and the Groton Telecommunicators Association for the term of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2025. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Melendez and seconded by Zeperry. Seeing no discussion, we will vote on 2025-64, Telecommunicator Pension Retiree Health Agreement. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. And it looks like we lost Mr. Burton again. He's having some issues with his service this evening. So we are on to other business. Councilor Obray.
Yeah, I had a question on, did we set up a committee to work on the temporary rental problem? There's probably a much better way to say that. Let me, I was looking for the list.
Short-term rentals?
Yes, yes.
And I'm in the process, I'm trying to find a way to get all the information to you guys, because there's quite a bit. We had, I believe, three meetings. I'll be, I'll be scheduling that, but we have some other things we have to get to first. But yes, we have a lot of people that gathered a lot of information and I'll be bringing that, sharing it with all of you. There's a lot of reading there to do, so. They did some good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Bordelone.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, because I went to check, to see, to clarify, when I asked the town manager, I just, you probably can't see it perfectly, but my, my suggestion that I was making, this is what I was kind of hoping for the format. And if anybody's interested in looking at it, it is on the Westerly's Facebook page and you can just see the meeting. Obviously, it's moving and people are talking. It's not a still shot that I'm showing, but I guess that, just to show the gentleman here that's doing the GMTV, that's kind of what I was referring to as an example and it, it just seemed to run really smooth. And they are using Zoom. I did verify.
Hold on, hold on a second. Mr. Greeley, are you here? Did you see what Councilor Bordelone held up for you? Thank you.
Oh, you did? I mean, I don't want to be the sole suggestion here. I was just saw something that I had seen and watched a few other meetings in different towns to see what the people were doing. And I just thought, the three other towns I watched, I'm not saying that we were doing a bad job. I just found it to be really efficient and it was really helpful to. Yeah, thank you, thank you. All right, I like that. I like a competition now. All right, thank you.
And I see no other hands. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion. Moved by Parker, seconded by Zeperry. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 7:58. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Be well.
Night.